Like to call. I'd like to call to order the February first, two thousand and twenty-two meeting town of McCandless Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is McCandless Square Phase Three Townhouse on Blazer Drive Continued Review. Is there a presentation for this part of it, RJ?
Uh, so I don't know. They didn't send me a whole entire PowerPoint, um, but I do have the new plan set that we can pull up. Jerry and Marty are both on the call here and Marty and Jerry, if you missed that earlier, you actually can unmute yourself in this meeting right now, um, because we know everyone on the call. So feel free to mute or unmute as you wish. Okay, Jerry, did you want me to pull up any plans or anything?
Yeah, you could pull up, um. I guess pull up C zero 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 first. That way we can give some of the new members just a tutorial of what's going on with this project.
Sure. Zero zero zero.
So if you want to zoom into that picture right in the middle there.
Thanks, that should be good.
Yeah, so this is the overall project. It's approximately twenty-four, twenty-five acres, uh, just off of Blazer Drive. You know, we came back in twenty nineteen to get a master plan approval for the development that included the personal care home, thirteen cottage homes, uh, some, some, uh, square footage for retail and where the current townhomes are shown off to the west, we had a flex building there. Back in October of two thousand and twenty-one, we got approval for a revised master plan that allowed us to do the townhome development on the west side in lieu of some retail space and some, uh, flex office space. The entire project is controlled by a stormwater management basin that is located to the east right behind Cottage Home twelve. That pond is actually large enough to control the entire site plus some off-site water that, uh, ends up onto our site from Blazer Drive. Uh, all of the utilities for the entire project were, were brought in in the initial phase, so sanitary, storm, uh, water lines, uh, there is no gas on the, on the project yet. Uh, all those facilities were constructed as part of the, the town, the, uh, senior living, personal care home and cottage homes. So the retail component and the townhome component is just going to have some extension to those existing utilities. You want to flip over to two hundred, actually probably two oh one? Let's go, let's just go to two hundred. There you go. So this plant submission was for the addition of these fifty-four townhome units. They vary in size from twenty feet wide to twenty-four feet wide. Every one of them has a two-car integral garage. The southern portion you can see has driveways that will accommodate an additional two vehicles. The upper portion has, um, some shared parking outside of the garage spaces. And there are, uh, five units there to the north that have driveways that can accommodate two vehicles as well. The, the parking does not meet the, the code. Um, I think that's the, the biggest issue with our letter that we received from Gateway Engineers. The, the required parking, I believe, is a hundred and eight. Is that on that sheet two, two oh one? I think if you just slide off to the side there, the parking council on there.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's, that's correct. Um, let me see if I can.
It is a hundred and eight is the required.
Yeah. And go to, go to two hundred. It's on, it's on sheet two hundred.
Ah, I see. It's over here. Yeah.
Ball table. So there it is, a hundred and eight. We're providing with the, the driveway spaces plus the, the, um, non-driveway shared parking spaces. We get ninety-three, but we do have a piece that is adjacent to us that can offer up an additional thirty-four spaces that is, um, part of a shared agreement that the overall development has amongst, um, the senior living, the retail and the townhomes where they can share all of these parking spaces if necessary. So there are adjacent to us about thirty-four spaces. That's directly adjacent to the site. If you pan up to the northern portion of the townhome development. So that commercial retail building, there's, you know, eight spaces, three spaces, and I think it's thirteen spaces. And then also there's some angled spaces down on Mill Street that provided an additional ten spaces that are directly adjacent to, to those townhomes in that area. Um, I don't, I don't think there was anything, um, major in the, in the comment letter. Uh, Dan, I don't, I don't know if you got anything in particular.
Jerry, why don't, why don't you just highlight? I think the, yeah, I agree. My comment letter is just some minor drafting issues and a couple cleanup items. Why don't you comment for the, the planning commission? Uh, there was lengthy discussion about parking and I observed that you did add some parking since last month in the site.
Yeah.
I don't think you described that yet.
Yeah, so, so yes, RJ's pointing out there, there's some parking spaces, um, right there in that, that curved space. I, we didn't have any there, so we picked up four spaces there. Um, and then, the next one where we have the three spaces to the north, we squeezed in another space up there. And then also those spaces right there, we picked up another one, another space in that area. So we did.
And you were able to push back the, uh, units or just the units there in that road to get double parking or get parking in the driveways and those, and that stick that's adjacent to the retail.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, what numbers are they? I think a forty-four.
Over here.
Yeah, right there, those ones. So those two end buildings, in order to create some depth in that, that structure, those two end units were pulled forward a little bit more than what they are now. So we actually slid those back a little bit to be more in line with what we've done down on the southern portion. I think it's a, just a two-foot offset. And by doing that, we were able to pick up, um, eighteen feet of depth between the face of the building and what would presumably be the end of the driveway.
Yeah, I think you, from, from the free spaces that I was circling earlier, I counted earlier, you, um, picked up seven total on those alone. So that's not even counting any extra spaces in the driveways that were able to be gained.
Yeah, I, the discussion we had last time was just about, um, the only way to really meet that requirement would be to start to remove units and actually put in a parking lot, which is not the, the desired, um, result that we want. We, you know, we want this to look residential in nature and, you know, community oriented and just to put another parking lot in when you have one behind the retail and then, you know, one off to the, the side of the townhomes. Just seems like this works a little bit better. We squeezed in as many as we could and still, still keep it, um, you know, fairly clean.
Yeah, and that, and that's in line with what I recall from, from last month's discussion that you estimated pretty accurately how many you'd be able to pick up, up in here.
Yes, I think, I think RJ will be happy to answer any questions anyone might have. But I think, I think this reflects a lot of what we talked about in the last meeting.
And we did provide, um, and it was yesterday, the, the rendering of the back of the buildings. I know one of the members wanted to see what the back of the buildings looked like. Uh, you know, we acknowledge it's not a colored rendering, but it still gives you an idea of, of what the back will look like. It's, it's not, it's not plain by any means. It's a very nice looking building.
Shelley, did you have any questions about those?
No, thank you very much for passing that on. I think I got the gist of it and it's, um, pretty much what I expected to see and I think it looks just fine. Looks very nice. The whole development is very nice.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, you mentioned just in passing, I, I was curious, said no gas in the property yet. Do none of these expected proposed townhomes, do you not expect to have gas in them?
No, we do. Um, there is a gas line that, that runs along our west property line and along our southern property line, and we will be able to pick up gas from there. All the cottages run off of electric heat. The personal care home does have a gas line, uh, but we have not extended the gas line for the, uh, for the, uh, retail portion of it either, but it will be provided, so.
Thank you. I'll throw this out. It's a, I, I don't think this is a requirement by any stretch, but I have always liked gas lights, outdoor gas lights. If there's any way that could be incorporated, I think that's a nice touch.
Um, does anyone have any questions particular to these new plan drawings, or do you want me to bring them down so we can see the group again?
I, I just, yeah, I had a, just a couple of quick questions. If that's okay, Dan, can I?
Oh, yes, go right ahead, Shelley.
Okay, thank you. One, this is really not about the development. This is just out of curiosity, um, more or less. Cause I, I think the developer has done a, a really good job of ensuring that there's adequate parking for this development, but is parking allowed on the street? And I'm, I guess I'm asking, I could have done my own research and I apologize for that, but I was just thinking about that. Um, well, would, would people park? I can't read it on this plan. But would people be able to park along Hopkins Street? I mean, I, I think you have to be off the street maybe at night or whatever, but could people be parking along those streets? Like if the retail develop, retail area got overrun or something? Or is, or is that we, are we not allowing on-street parking in this development?
Um, I will, I will say that on the cottages, when I went down there to kind of snoop around um, in front of the model, there were people parking along the street there and it would have been tight to make two-way traffic there. Now Pittsburghers are used to tight two-way traffic, especially in the city. But you certainly couldn't have done it on, parked on both sides of the street. You wouldn't have been able to get through.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's noted on, I mean, I just, if it's on the plan somewhere, I haven't seen it immediately, but um, I'm assuming that most of these are going to be private, not all of them are going to be private streets, so that would probably be up to, you know, the HOA or however we end up doing that, um, where the no parking zones would be aside from, you know, particularly more on the, on the dead end ones. I mean, they're pretty narrow. I don't know that they would meet spec to have on-street parking.
I agree, because I measured them and I guess I'll ask the developer, um, and, and I only, I'm bringing this up because there's a similar development that was in my ward when I was on council and they did not, um, they did not think in their declarations or whatever, when they, you know, created the development to, um, well, they allowed, uh, they specifically allowed street parking for temporary, you know, use, not permanent, like a visitor in a couple of areas and it has become over the, over the years, a, a big problem for them. So I guess, developer, what is your opinion about having, allowing onsite parking? Cause you can't on, you really can't on one side of Hopkins because it's all driveway, but on the, um, the part that's closest to Cooper Street, you know, I could see people parking there if they were allowed to. What do you think about that?
What's, uh, what's the width of that of Hopkins, Jerry?
It's twenty.
Twenty.
And that, and that's, and these have a wedge curve, right?
Correct.
So the twenty is eight, is back of the curve, back of the curve. So two eighteen-inch wedge curves and then a cartway?
No, the cartway is at the gutter line of the curb.
And how wide is that?
It's twenty. So, so for instance.
All right, so with, so with the curve, it's twenty, it's twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you know, honestly, I haven't, we haven't given that a lot of thought because like you said, there's a lot of driveways. And then there's the little areas where obviously there wouldn't be a driveway. So, um, you'll definitely be able to get cars passed if somebody did parallel park. Um, we're not designating any off-street parking, like, you know, the parallel spots like in the city. But, yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to give that, give that some thought. I know the HOA docs, you know, they won't allow overnight parking, but I'm not sure if somebody comes to visit somebody in unit twelve, you know, whether they park in their driveway or they park right next to it. Um, the other, you're not going to have a lot of situation where you'd have two cars across from each other because you'll be blocking people's driveways.
No, I see that. I, I don't know how the other commission members feel, but, um, personally, I think for a lot of reasons, safety and, and it's in the winter with plowing and everything else, I would prefer to see, I guess, along Hopkins and well, Hopkins really is what we're talking about.
Yeah, because there, Hopkins Court is just like a, a driveway service way for those, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, I would personally think that, that not allowing on-street parking on Hopkins would be a cleaner, nicer looking, better look for this community. And I do think you've worked really hard to get adequate parking within the context of what you've developed.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know how my fellow commission members, what their thoughts are on that.
Well, this is Dan. I think all things being equal, I would prefer not to have the street parking. I agree with you, Shelley. And I would maybe suggest that that's the way it starts out and let's see if, uh, it, it continues to operate and, uh, through traffic is, is functional. If that's the way we started out.
Would you be willing to consider making that?
No, I think what we, we could put restriction on the parking. I'm thinking as you're talking about this. Um, there would have to be a we'd have to figure out, there'd have to be like a time limit. We would have to specify what, uh, what the restriction would be because, you know, down in the strip district, which is tighter than this, we don't allow parking behind any of the units, which is the main driveway and it's, it's twenty, it might even be twenty-two feet wide, but we don't allow parking behind it except for delivery vehicles, um, temporary, like if there's a, you know, cleaning person, blah, 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 blah type of thing. Um, so we could, we could have some type of restrictions like that. The reality, I think of the situation is there'll be cars that are parked there at certain times for some of those situations. So I don't think you're going to be able to eliminate cars stopping and making a delivery, especially Amazon and all that stuff, the way they're doing it these days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about, um, you know, and I don't want to make this into, um, an enforcement issue that the town then has to take on. I guess that's not my intent. It's, it's more like, um, and in your HOA documents or whatever, identifying that, you know, there is, you know, there is to be no street parking. And I get you. I mean, yeah, Amazon trucks are going to stop, uh, somebody might stop to do an hour cleaning job or something. I don't think that's what I'm talking about. On a, on a practical level, I'm talking about, don't want to start the, don't, don't want to start a, um, a habit of people taking every spot they can along, you know, those open areas on the right-hand side there of Hopkins.
Right. To. Yeah, we, we, we can put, the, the easiest way to say it is we, we can put parking restrictions in the HOA docs. The township would not be involved in any enforcement of that because they're private streets. So that would be the HOA. We're, we're dealing with that right now on the, in the strip. We had to start towing cars because people were parking overnight in the back. Um, and after a couple of weeks of doing it, I was down there today, there's no cars back there, so.
People learn quick.
Yep, they do. Once a couple of cars get towed to the, the pound, uh, they, they stop parking back there.
I guess be, as we move closer to making, ma- ma- making a motion, Dan, I, I don't, I mean, I think, uh, because if I were making a motion right now, I would make a motion that included that, the HOA documents would include a, um, no street parking provision for Hopkins, but again, it's not my decision. It's up to the entire commission if they, so I guess I think we ought to get their opinion.
I, I'm not even sure if someone can answer for me helpfully. Do we even have the right to request and dictate what goes into the HOA agreements?
You know, this is the one meeting that, uh, I, I told the town attorney, it would probably be pretty simple legally, so I didn't bring him.
Recommendation in the motion.
Right, but also I, I mean, we don't have a requirement for communities that have an HOA necessarily to provide us with the whole agreement. I think that typically we ask for it where we can, but like I haven't seen one of those in my time here. There's definitely nothing in the code that would specifically speak to that, but, you know, as Shelley is saying, that would just be sort of a contingent recommendation in this case.
Well, I think I'd be happy to ask for that as part of our motion was, as we move forward and let the, uh, let the developer put it in there. I think we got an indication that they would be willing to do so. So seems to me like we probably have it covered.
Yeah, RJ, we, we typically do. You will get a copy of the, uh, HOA docs.
Great. Hey, I'll take them.
Very exciting reading.
Oh, a couple of people know me. I might actually have some fun.
Oh, I did. And my, my second question um, was again, nothing that we can dict- dictate, um, but was wondering if you had an opportunity to look at the recommended landscaping tree plantings list that RJ gave you.
Yeah, we did. We replaced, uh, the trees per that new guidance. Uh, if you go to sheet seven hundred, they're on there. And.
I apologize. I, it, most of what I got, by the time I got to the landscaping plan, everything had looked, a lot of it looked pretty similar.
Yeah, we changed the, uh, the plantings to, uh, the honey, I think it was the honey locust is what, uh, was requested. Yeah. So there should be a planting list, um.
It's probably somewhere on this sheet. I think it's over here.
Great.
On the third sheet, I believe.
Yeah, I appreciate you taking a look at that.
Aha, I found it.
No, that's the seeds. I think.
Just kidding. I found a seed mixture.
Yeah. Two, I think.
There we go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There you go. So, yeah, the honey locust. And I think those are the ones that are in front of all the, all the buildings.
Oh, flowering dogwood. That's nice. I didn't see that.
Those are all perfect. Thank you. You're great. That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other comments? Doesn't sound like it. RJ, are we ready for a motion then at this point?
Uh, well, we, we do want to take, uh, any public comment if there is any, uh, I'll, I'll take the screenshot down just so it's a little easier to see. The only person I see on the meeting that is not part of the commission is Trish Clunin. So Trish, if you have a public comment, you are welcome to make it now. And I'm not seeing any comments or anything in the chat, so, um, in that case, I think we're ready to entertain a motion for the modification.
Okay, is someone really with, ready to make a motion to recommend to town council that they approve the modification request? Number one, to permit an alternative parking standard of ninety-three exclusive off-street parking spaces for the fifty-four townhome units, reduced from the one oh eight with an additional thirty-four shared spaces available within other phases of the development. That's a long motion that if someone wants to make that. So moved? Was that great?
Yeah.
Um, can I have a question?
Sure.
Might this not be the time to add, potentially add to that motion? I guess the add is with recommendation to prohibit parking, um, street parking along Hopkins Street?
With, I think it probably would.
Yeah, this would make sense to attach to this motion.
So as an attachment to this, uh, the recommendation will include a request to include in the HOA that there not be, that there be limited parking, as was previously discussed along Hopkins Street.
And Shelley, did you second that?
I did.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Closed?
Well, I'm going to be opposed. I don't oppose the modification. I just, I'm opposed to getting into dictating what's in HOA documents, so. I favor the modification. I just don't like getting into the private HOA documents because that's something the township, I don't think should be involved in.
I can, um, I can note in the minutes, like, you know, the reason for dissent, if that would make sense.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, um, in that case, that would be a five to one. But theoretically a six for approving the modification.
It's a limited opposition, I guess is the way you might want to.
Yeah, I mean, like, well, we'll do it five one just because that's how you do the minutes, but, you know, anytime there's an extension or whatever, I know why.
Okay, and, uh, do we need any further discussion on item C of the agenda, RJ, or should we just go ahead with that motion, uh, as well?
Uh, that, that is up to you. I don't have anything further to add. Um, seems like everybody else was, you know, all talked out.
It sounds like it to me as well. So I'll, I'll need a motion to recommend to town council to approve the land development application for the McCandless Square Phase Three Townhome Plan as submitted by Laurel Communities. So Shelley moved? Is there a second? I'm sorry, who did the second come from?
My second.
John? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Hearing none. Looks like it's in favor.
Let me just, uh, do my notes real quick here and, um, Jerry and Marty, I will presumably see you all back at the February twenty-eighth council meeting. Get in touch with Dan and, uh, Dan Diesroth, or I, uh, if you have any questions about the comment letter to get everything buttoned up, um, in advance of that, but otherwise, um, we are still virtual at that council meeting, so be prepared to Zoom.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, item number two on the agenda uh, is the approval of the January four, twenty-twenty-two minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at those? I see a few heads nodding, so can I have a motion to approve the January four, twenty-twenty-two minutes?
I'm asking to approve the January, uh, fourth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, was that Jonathan on a second?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition. It sounds like, though, they've been approved.
Um, I don't know that we have any general public comment. If we didn't have any application public comment, but Trish is still on the meeting, so Trish, speak now if you would like to make a comment. Okay, not seen any comments.
No comment. Thank you.
Sorry, Trish, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other comments before we move to adjournment from anybody on the commission?
Uh, is there something, uh, scheduled for, uh, the, uh, did they, did they say, uh, a steering committee thing for February eighth?
Uh, that, that is just for the particular people that got put on the task force focus group, as we're calling it, for the zoning ordinance update. You all will be getting kind of bigger up. Um, you all will be getting kind of bigger updates as, you know, the text actually moves along. Um, so Kim and Shelley are on the steering committee for that, but you all do not need to attend.
Oh, so, so we can attend, but, but we don't have to then.
Uh, well, so these ones are not open to the public right now, but there are going to be probably two or three, um, activities that are fully open to the public. Um, so right now, it is just the steering committee that is going to be coming to this one.
RJ, could you just outline what the general timeline is that you hope to work through the zoning and, and issue new zoning laws for us?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So I, I will say that the, um, consultant firm that we, uh, you know, council ultimately uh, decided to hire, uh, Michael Baker, um, they keep it running. They are, they are prompt on time and when that meeting is supposed to end, it ends. So I think they're going to be pretty, pretty good at, um, sticking to the schedule. Uh, the proposal had twelve months scoped, um, as the total project time. So we're probably looking at, um, midsummer is when we're really going to get the draft swinging. Um, you know, do some different community meetings, shirets, start bringing you all, um, you know, more concrete updates. Uh, by the end of the year, both the zoning ordinance and the subdivision and land development portion of the ordinance should pretty much be drafted, already advertised, potentially, you know, public hearing adoption. Um, we could have as early as maybe January, February, um, whole new code.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah, we actually just, um, we, we did a little, uh, drive around, just myself and some of the consultant team yesterday, just to kind of, you know, hit the hub areas of town and get sort of a look and feel for things. And, um, our project manager was very intensely writing notes in, which usually is a good sign, so. Yeah, we're going to have a good time with it.
All right, good, thank you. Any other, uh, comments from anyone before we move to adjourn? Doesn't sound like it. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm able to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Hearing none, it looks like it approved, meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.